All right, welcome everyone. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for North Idaho College is resuming in March 22nd at 6:14 PM. We're resuming from executive session earlier where we talked and Quorum is now present. Welcome, everybody. So, welcome everyone to the business meeting of the Board of Trustees. Where's my agenda? Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everyone can take a deep sigh of relief. We only have 11 public comments and we do appreciate everyone coming here, but we don't have full, how many pages we had last time? So, only 11 people. We're going to be limited to two minutes and we should be able to get through everybody. So, welcome. If Sarah Ferris would please come, she's speaking to accreditation. And Alex Elliott, you're on deck if you make your way close to the microphone.
Good evening, President Swain, Chair McKenzie.
Yeah, is her? Give it a tap.
Okay.
Okay, all right, restart her time first.
Okay. Good evening, President Swain, Chair McKenzie, trustees and fellow citizens. My name is Sarah Ferris. Court Elaine has been a part of my life since the 1950s. I remember Eisenhower and Truman. When I started coming here as a toddler, I'm a proud resident now. My ties to NIC run deep. My late grandfather Walter S. Rosenberry was one of the key figures along with David Winton and Maurice Breakpyre to get the school established in 1933 at the height of the Great Depression. My grandfather, the son of a Civil War veteran, a farmer, was unable to afford a college education for himself, but he wanted young people to have one and he wanted his six children to have one. Tonight, I'd like to address the issue of accreditation. Accreditation at a college is absolutely essential to keep it running smoothly and ensuring an environment that is stable, safe and productive and living up to its standards. It is the beating heart of a place. To lose accreditation would be an avoidable tragedy. If the founders could start this college in the most perilous and stressful economic time in American history, there is no viable excuse to lose it now or ever. The eyes of the world are watching these meetings and how we all conduct ourselves. There are times these past few years when I have been watching from home and witnessed behavior that I know would not be allowed or accepted. At an elementary student council meeting, I taught in both public and private schools and I know there are certain standards and guidelines. Biggest mistake I think we all make is not focusing on what's best for students at all times. They are why the founder started this college in 1933 and they are why we must continue it. It's about them. It is on your shoulders, ladies and gentlemen, all of us, to right this ship, maintain accreditation and a positive respectful environment for all. The founders did this, now it's up to us to continue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for focusing on the students.
All right, Alex Elliott, you're next and Ron. We did, we did reset her time. Yes, we did. And thank you for coming. Alex Elliott, go for it.
For the first time in a long time, I've seen smiles, real smiles, all over campus. Dr. Nick Swain is back on campus and with him, he has brought renewed hope and happiness to North Idaho College. Legal litigation, however, I was pleased to see that the board complied with the court's order. I would like to invite the board to reflect on that word, those words, court order. Greg McKenzie, last week you cut off trustee Zimmerman during discussion and asked her if she was going to overrule the chair. If you believe that you have that ultimate power, then what is so hard for you to understand about Judge Myers' order? If you want to show the NWCCU that you are not acting in good faith, then yes, trying to subvert the court's lawful order is a good way to do that. Stop fighting, stop scrambling and accept the fact that the legal system prevailed true. In the words of Greg McKenzie, "Welcome to politics. You didn't get what you wanted, so accept that fact and move on." Nonetheless, I want to thank Dr. Swain for everything that he has done during his time back on campus. This college needs you and we are so grateful that you are with us.
Thank you. Ron Hartman and Randy Neal, you're on deck.
I want to thank the board for the moment, it's time to talk. Mine's on the Athletic Conference Participation. First, I'd like to congratulate the men's basketball team for an undefeated season. NIC is currently in two athletic conferences. The one is the NWAC, which the basketball team's in. The other is the NJCAA, which the other teams are in. The basketball team, the NWAC, is only in three states. That's it. It's a minor league conference. The NJCAA is nationwide. Booster Club Board Member Doug Miller has allowed me to use his name and I have talked to him at great length about the conferences. When we, when the basketball team was in the NJCAA, we filled the gym. The teams and their students and stuff stayed in our hotels. They went to our restaurants. And now with the basketball team in the NWAC, the team comes in town, they get off the bus, they play the game, they get on the bus and they leave. So, it makes it a hard sell on why is the NWAC to our local businesses? This conference isn't providing any money into the community. So, I have two que, I got one question. Mr. Swain, you have stated publicly to change conferences would cost $2 million. Will you please provide the data and facts you use to determine the cost of $2 million?
The board, we will, at our discretion, fine. You can keep going with your public comment.
The other one is it makes no sense to be in two conferences. I mean, we need to be in one conference and the basketball team needs to join the rest of the school.
That's your time. Thank you, sir. And just for everyone's awareness, the wrestling is in the NJ.
NJCAA.
NJCAA and.
Everybody else is in.
Everybody else is in. Just thank you for your time coming down. Wait, we have Randy Neal.
Ignite CDA's education corridor model plan calls for private development of mixed-use apartments on the valuable NIC property. The taxpayers will bear the cost of tearing down all existing properties and infrastructure improvements. The Friends of NIC are private plan developers and limousine liberals who benefit from NIC largacy. They could care less about academics but need a compliant college president.
Randy, university district's not on the agenda right now.
The appointed board that was usurped the elected board's authority by design. University of Idaho is controlled by the State Board of Education.
Randy, I appreciate you coming down here.
This is, this is relevant to the whole entire situation, the accreditation and.
It's not on the agenda. Yeah. I'm fortunate. I wish, Randy, I wish I could give you your time, but we're going to have to claim it back. So, I'm sorry. Is, that was Randy, is Jamie Barube and Michael McGowan is on deck? Either of those persons, please make your way to the microphone. And Kaylee Neal is on deck.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and President Swain. I'd like to speak specifically to the following agenda items, accreditation and show cause and litigation. Board, the community is counting on you to prove that you are taking your training from ACCT very seriously. As Chair McKenzie stated, the training is to understand your roles as Board of Trustees and provides the essential day-to-day operations of NIC to the president, which is Nick Swain. You further stated you're committed to showing the NWCCU students and stakeholders that you're willing to do the significant work to become a functional and effective board. You challenged us to be committed to looking at the future. Are you truly, truly committed, as you stated in February? As stated by the NWCCU, there are three lawsuits. Now, there's another. Motion of reconsideration to place Dr. Swain back on administrative leave by two board members, two interns appointed by that board and one member of the president's cabinet. The member of the president's cabinet does not speak for the majority of students, staff and faculty. Neither of the interns staff have worked with Dr. Swain directly or long enough to make such accusations. The actions of the two current board members, Zimmerman and Corkill, are not representative of the entire board and I want to thank you both for your service. Changes in leadership and other possible transition in leadership without probable cause will take NCI, NIC off, show cause and will only cause more damage. Were you within your purview to place Dr. Swain on administrative leave without cause? I think not. Uncertainty as to who the chief executive officer is, it is Dr. Swain. He is our CEO. He was put back in this position on March 3rd due to the fact that the three trustees, one employee, two interns and the eternity appointed you don't agree with the judge from.
Thank you. Thank you. The next up is Michael McGowan. Thank you for coming down here. That's very thoughtful. You're welcome to email it to us too. Michael McGowan, thank you. And Kaylee Neal is on deck.
Good evening to all. I've lived in Post Falls for 23 years and taught for 22. I'm speaking on accreditation, but more especially on enrollment. I've been controversial in the past, but tonight I have the pleasure of perhaps settling a controversy or at least helping to. Both left and right have been bashing each other on the declining enrollment thing. It turns out that there's no need for this at all. In the main, it's not anyone's fault. I was glad to see that a lady who spoke at the last open meeting mentioned this fact, but I rather doubt that it has been taken seriously. So, I'm here tonight to support her statement as factual by giving sources for the data. For the longer-term trends since 2011, do a net search under community college enrollment crisis. Community college enrollment crisis. You'll find a PDF put out by the American Association of Community Colleges. Take a look at page two and you'll see a graph that covers from 2001 to 2017. It'll sync with what Dr. Kurt showed a while back with what's going on at NIC. There's just one of the more reliable sources, this is just one of the more reliable sources, saying that enrollment has been declining nationwide since 2011. We could talk more about the data, more recent data, but two minutes is not possible to get that done. Let me just suggest you also do a net search under the terms community college enrollment trends. Community college enrollment trends. So, I hope that the NWCCU is not including declining enrollment as an issue in regard to accreditation. We should be curious about the causes of the decline, I think. Various sources of info attribute various causes. Examples, shift to online learning, worsening economic hardships, heightened skepticism about the value of higher education and declining population. Other articles, all right, I'm not going to finish. That'll do, thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming down and speaking with us. Kaylee Neal, welcome. And Karim Shepler.
Hello, I'm Kaylee. I've lived in Corwin, Idaho my whole life. I'm 14 and. Swain, you should resign or get fired because you have lied under oath.
If we could stay on the agenda topics.
Okay, this is on the agenda topic.
Well, okay, go, keep going, but I'm not seeing it so far.
He, he has been, he has been. President Swain is an ally to Councilwoman Christie, the one who is the cause for the accreditation issue.
Do you have other topics? Maybe you could skip down past Dr. Swain?
Okay, then. Councilwoman Christie Woods is responsible for manipulating the community.
We, you can maybe speak these at the university district. I think it's coming on the agenda maybe next week or next month or in the, in the future. That's not on the agenda yet, though I think I know where you're going with that.
Okay, that's all I really had to say, kind of stuff of speech. I guess the next person's going up.
Do you, one only question, do you hope to come to NIC in time?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you for coming down. Karim Shepler and both Sheplers, Robert Shepler. And I'm sorry, I'm screwing it up. Would people please state their names first?
It's still Karen Shepler.
Karen, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a note for my.
Very good. So, I got up here and I said I hoped and prayed that the board would show integrity the last meeting I was able to attend and I didn't see it happen as Chair McKenzie opted not to cast his vote when the roll call was made to reinstate President Swain. So, there are processes in place for, okay, talking was. Very public comment means you can't hear me and passing notes, not really professional. So, maybe you could pay attention. So, it's on legal litigation. So, there's processes in place to make sure that the board is accountable to us as constituents. So, this is putting you officially, this is my official complaint against Chair McKenzie. So, Mr. Wagner, you should be paying attention as the vice chair for dereliction of duty. And in two minutes, I do not have the opportunity to list all of the policies that you are in violation of. But I will be sharing that via email after this meeting and I will be sharing it with the city, county, state and federal governments as appropriate so that their investigative boards can determine your criminal culpability. Which might bring other lawsuits. So, Mr. McCumber, get ready to bill the taxpayers some more money for that one too.
Thank you for coming down. And is there a Robert Shepler? And just, just to make sure there's no friction on this board, my memory recalls and we're welcome to go to the minutes, but I remember calling, voting to reinstate you as president and we've had a working. I didn't?
Yeah, actually Chair McKenzie, it's in the minutes that you didn't vote. I don't think, I think it was two, two, sorry, it was four, it was 4-0. Because you didn't need to vote.
Because you didn't.
I didn't need to vote, but. Okay, well, I will watch that, that session again because I think we, I think I closed it saying we had unanimous, but I don't know, I'll, forgive me, let's keep going.
Hi, my, my name is Robert Shepler and I brought a bag of change today. It's got $10.84 in it, which is exactly the amount that Art McCumber bills for two minutes of our time. And I felt it was appropriate.
Topic?
My topic is about the legis, is the legal issues, sorry. Mr. McCumber, you billed the associates or sorry, the taxpayers.
Mr. McComber doesn't necessarily relate to these legal issues because he's.
Well, he does because he's the first attorney I've ever seen that's created legal issues for the organization he's represented.
Actually, you'd be surprised on that statement from my perspective.
Well, that's, that's okay. Your perspective and mine may be different. I'm allowed to do that.
Keep going on your topic, but if you could stick to an agenda item and so far I'm not seeing it.
Understood, thank you, sir. The number of cases that have been filed against NIC is continuing to grow on a daily basis. It's, it's a sad estate. The amount that's been billed out to the taxpayers of the county is an abomination, I think, to most of us. The $1,625 that was billed for last month's council, last month's board meeting alone represented an amount of dollars that is more than the average person in Cootney County makes in a two-week period. Those are, part of the board's responsibility is to be fiscally sound and those kinds of numbers don't fit that agenda or that they don't fit that picture. The citizens are tired of the lawsuits. They need to be resolved as quickly as possible and as financially sound as possible without the addition of more coming on. I don't see that happening in the future. We need to do that. Part of the problem with the Northwest, the accreditation company said that there are lawsuits that need to be resolved. We'd like to see them resolved, we'd like to see them resolved financially sound.
Thank you for coming down and speaking with us. Is there a Gerald Green and a Mike Gridley's on deck?
My name's Gerald Green. I just want to take a second to thank the board members particularly. Particularly, I would like to thank Brad Corkill for proposing that we reinstate Dr. Swain. Thank you very much for that. Zimmerman, thank you for your efforts. I know this is difficult. This, these are trying times. The two of you have stepped forward when very few people would, would be willing to do that. You put your name on the line when a great deal is at stake. Thank you for doing that. President Swain, thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your enthusiasm. I see you out trying to recruit students, encourage students to come, trying to address the issues that college faces. They seem to be dire to me. Thank you for your efforts to address those. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Mike Gridley.
Good evening, I'm Mike Gridley.
Thank you for stating your name.
And I haven't done karaoke, so I'm a little close there. I just want to speak to accreditation and I wanted to say I'm a strong supporter of NIC. I'm a strong supporter of trying to maintain our accreditation. I want to welcome Dr. Swain back. I think that's part of the deal. The thing, and I listened to a book on tape recently and it's about the polarization in America that exists. And I think the polarization that exists at NIC and how we bridge that and how we bridge that. And part of it is understanding and education, educating both sides on why they're doing what they're doing. So, the question, and there were a couple of questions asked and I don't expect you to answer it from the floor to the floor, but what am I missing? What am I missing? What are the students missing? The students who embrace Dr. Swain coming back? What are, what is staff missing? What is faculty missing? What are they missing? Why are we still opposing Dr. Swain coming back? So, those are my comments. I support people smiling, people trying to work together. But we will, we're not going away and we will keep pushing, pushing, pushing to save NIC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're moving on to celebrating success, recent student success. If Alex Harris.
Alex was here, there he is.
Welcome, Alex.
Chair McKenzie, members of the board, Dr. Swain. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce people that will talk about two different groups of students that have succeeded very well this semester. So, first up, we have Amber Haz, who is the staff advisor for our Phi Theta Kappa. She's going to tell you a little bit about that program.
Hi, so tonight it's my pleasure to share some student success.
Amber, let me interrupt. Students, if you could go closer to the, to the microphones so the, the folks at home can see you and. Yeah, the camera can't catch all you, so.
All right.
You're, you're the reason why we're here.
They are. So, it's my pleasure to enter, to share some student success within our Phi Theta Kappa chapter here on campus. Phi Theta Kappa is a national honor society. Students must have 12 credits. They must have a GPA of 3.5 and they must adhere to the student code of conduct in order to be admitted to Phi Theta Kappa. So, I wanted to start off by introducing our officers. This is Bryce Telling, Telling Hudson, is that correct? Houston, Kaylee Northrop and Naomi Fisher. I'm the staff advisor and we have a faculty advisor, Nicole Wills. I'm gonna say it wrong, Kesa. Lacassi is our Bronze Scholar for the Coca-Cola's 2023 Academic Team. Cassia was, I'm still gonna say it wrong, Kesa, was, was awarded a $1,000 scholarship recently. She was chosen out of 2,400 students for that award. We have a student that's not with us here today, but they were awarded the 2023 New Century Transfer Pathway Scholar. That student was chosen out of the same 2,400 applicants, but was the top scoring student from the state for our path, for the pathway option. And that student was awarded a $2,250 scholarship. And finally, we have Bryce, who was awarded the 2023 New Century Workforce Pathway Scholar. He was selected amongst those 2,400 applicants and was the top scoring student from the state in his category. And he was awarded $1,250 scholarship. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to them and let Bryce, Kaylee and Naomi tell you a little bit more about Phi Theta Kappa, our chapter.
Hello, my name is Bryce, as you guys know. Phi Theta Kappa is an honor society for two years, which is international. So, there's lots of different divisions over the US and even in different countries. So, they base our chapters off of different stars. So, to get, we achieved four stars, just, we only had three officers this year, so we didn't have a ton of. We just strove for as best as we could. So, to get four stars, we had a fall and then we have an upcoming spring meeting. We also attended a regional conference via Zoom. And then lastly, we also held a supply drive for the Children's Center. I'll turn it over to Kaylee.
As Bryce introduced, I'm Kaylee. Our college project, we worked with the NIC Children's Center to create an arts and crafts supply drive. We also combined our efforts with the MICA Flats Happy Women's, Happy Family Women's Club, apologies, where we were able to collect over 100 items of varying arts and crafts themes, including markers, pom poms, yarn and much more. And this all goes towards the enrichment of the children that are being taken care of at the Children's Center. And the Women's Club also donated $185 towards the cause.
And lastly, my name is Naomi Fisher. I will be top, speaking about the catalyst. Two of NIC, of our officers would be attending Columbus, Ohio this year in April to attend what is their annual catalyst, which is where most members from different state come together, you know, to like build their leadership skills or professionalism and, you know, just be in one environment, in one room and get to know each other pretty well. So, thank you very much.
We do one final round of applause. I mean, these, these, these guys are. We're, we're trying to change our tagline to smart people come here. Because these, these students are great examples of that.
With that, I have the pleasure of introducing our esteemed Athletic Director, Sean Noel, who's going to make our next introductions.
With that, I have the pleasure of introducing our esteemed athletic director, Sean Noel, who's going to make our next introductions.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Good evening, Chair McKenzie, trustees Banducci, Corkle Wagner, Zimmerman, President Swain, Mr. McComber and colleagues and friends in attendance. My name is Sean Noel, like Alex said, the Director of Athletics and Recreation. And I was asked this evening to talk about celebrating student success. And in my world, athletics and recreation is student success. I see it every day. Before I get to this, this group here, our our wonderful wrestling team, I just want to kind of recap our winter sports programs and talk a little bit about where our spring sports programs are right now. So men's basketball enjoyed a 28-1 season on our veteran head coach, Corey Simmons, who was named East Region Coach of the Year. Freshmen Kobe Campbell and sophomores Julius Mims and Tatum King were named first team all region. Campbell was also named freshman of the year and Mims was named defensive player of the year. Sophomore Xavier Bailey was named to the all defensive team. The men's basketball team in the fall semester had a 2.97 GPA. Women's basketball finished the season 17-12 and advanced to the Elite Eight, led by first year head coach Nate Colville. Freshman Addie Kiefer from Lakeland High School was named second team all East Region. The women's basketball team had a fall GPA of a 3.05. Softball is off to a 7-6 start early in the season. NIC alum Shay Fuzen is in her fourth season as head coach. They're scheduled to host their first home doubleheader on April 1st at Memorial Field. Side note, it's going to be kind of tough. I think there's a little snow on the field. So check NICathletics.com. That's where you go for your most updated news schedules and more. So so check that out. They had a fall GPA of a 2.96. Our golf teams, men's golf finished in second place earlier this week at the LCSC, LCSC Invitational, while the women's team finished in third. Both were the only two-year schools at the match. NIC will host a home golf match, May 8th and 9th at Avondale Golf Course. The men had a 2.84 GPA and the women had a 2.86 GPA. And on to men's wrestling. First of all, we're excited to have hired Derek Booth. He's an alum of NIC as our permanent wrestling coach earlier this week. Derek was a member of the 2013 NJCA National Championship Team and was an All-American in 2014 for NIC. And I think it's great. We have an opportunity to not only bring a someone that understands NIC and understands the wrestling program, but is just a good person with great values. I think is so important. Derek understands the importance of wrestling, not only to to North Idaho, but to the greater community. And I think he's going to do an excellent job and he's done that already, connecting the community members. So I want to welcome Derek. Permanent basis. Wrestling had a 2.54 GPA, but they have 40 guys. So it's still, it's still a wonderful accomplishment. So and I'm going to turn it over to Derek Booth, so he can take you through and just introduce you to some of the guys and talk about the season.
Well, thank you, Sean, for the kind words. First of all, I'd like to thank President Swain and the board trustees for having us tonight. I think it's always a great opportunity to recognize, you know, people in our community and our campus for their success. Like Sean said, I'm local, born and raised in Post Falls, alumni of NIC. So your guys' support this past year has been amazing. We had some of the best attendance at our two home duels that we had that I've ever seen. I know that when I was here, even the year we won a national title, I didn't see that many people in that gym. So that was awesome to see. I'm going to keep this kind of short because I got some guys that I got to hurry off to a very important intramural basketball game tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce these guys. These are nine national qualifiers. They wrestled three weeks ago in Council Bluffs. We we ended up taking home a fifth place finish, which, you know, it was good, but not necessarily what we wanted. We were the highest placing team that didn't have a full 10 guys there. So these guys wrestled, you know, they wrestled super hard, wrestled with heart and you know, that was all we could ask from them. So first up, we got Kobe Johnson. He represented us at 125. He's out of Greeley, Colorado. He's a freshman, so he'll be back on the team next year. Next up, we got Brant Porter, 141 pounds from Hawaii.
Can the gentleman come come to your side?
Yep, step up and raise your hand when I call you out. So Kobe Johnson.
Everybody shift to your right.
For the for the Zoom camera, if
Folks at home can't see you. You may not want to be seen, but
And then at 141 pounds.
Keep shifting down the line if you would. As as no, hold on, hold on.
That's good, that's good.
As he, as he talks about you, as he
Well rehearsed, well rehearsed.
As he talks about you, then keep shifting. So
At 141 pounds, we have our 56th national champion in program history in Brant Porter. He's a sophomore, so he'll be leaving us next year. We're trying to figure out where he's going here right now. He's kind of going through the process at looking at schools and going on visits. So we're excited for him. 149 pounds, we have Kanai Tapia out of Hawaii. He was an All-American this year, taking sixth place. At 157 pounds, we got Ben Mitchell out of Mead High School out of Spokane. So pretty local guy. He he went on one of the best runs I've ever seen at a national tournament, making his way to the the national finals and taking second. So big year from Ben. 165 pounds, we got Ledger Petraczek. Did I say it right? Oh, it's close. Two-time All-American. Last year he took fourth. This year he battled through a lot of injuries. He had a fractured back in the first semester, a couple knee injuries. He came back to us and ended up taking fourth at the national tournament. 174 pounds, we got Ethan Miller out of Post Falls. So another local guy that wrestled for us. He transferred in this year from Ellsworth, Iowa. And he had a great season overall. We didn't get the finish we wanted at the end, but he'll be moving on to a four-year school here soon. 184 pounds, we got Travis Waldner out of Dexter, Missouri. He's a freshman. He wrestled 184 pounds for us this year. But that was bumping up for the team. So next year he'll be looking to make a national title run down a couple weight classes. 197, we had Bradley Witright out of Cheyenne, Wyoming, freshman for us. He'll be looking to come back. He had a very good tournament. I would say he lost a kind of a heartbreaker in the blood round, which is the round where you either place or you don't. So he's going to be coming back to us next year, looking for a high podium finish. And our big man, we got Shai Murray out of Boise, Idaho. Shai started the year off at 197 pounds and he bumped up to 285 pounds. You know, one of those things we asked him during the middle of the season because we didn't have a heavyweight. So he kind of did that for the team and he wrestled wrestled really well, qualified for the national tournament and you know, we're excited to have him back next year. And last but not least, I'd just like to introduce my assistant coach, Cooper Thomas. He's also a former alumni and wrestled here in 2015-16. So thank you all.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want, the folks in the audience may not understand why you're announcing the GPA average. And as a two-year institution, our goal is to have them compete at the top level in their sport, but also have them transfer and complete their four-year degrees somewhere else. And so it's so important for these young men and women that you heard about earlier for them to be able to do that and to to transfer. They've got to have a qualifying GPA. So hats off to the coaches and the students for making that happen. Great job.
Thank you all for your continued support. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for coming out late. All right, Damian Maxwell, if you'd please speak on behalf of ASNC.
Good evening, President Swain, Chair McKenzie and the Board of Trustees. So ASNC's been very busy. One thing we worked on was the diversity statement, which has been voted on. I don't believe you guys have received a copy yet, so I'm going to hold off on reading that as of right now. ASNC's been busy as always. One thing we did actually last Saturday was me and one of the senators, as well as a couple students, we went out and we volunteered for the Special Olympics, which I think was pretty, pretty awesome to do. So we just kind of, we helped with the timing on each of the racers as well as announcing their names. Other than that, we have a bunch of side projects going on right now. One thing that we want to do is we want to put some, oh, yeah.
Was the Special Olympics on campus or where did you volunteer for that?
Oh, that'd be Silver Lake.
Okay.
Yeah. Beautiful. I've never been there before, but that's wonderful. So one thing I'm working on is trying to get some benches in the bathrooms here. And so we're trying to see if that's going to be compliant with all the codes to make sure that there's still like good access in there. But the idea behind that is students can just come in, set down their backpacks, do what they have to do. They have them over in Meyer. And so that was something on the spring survey that a few people mentioned. And so hoping to do that. Next up, we have the academic best practice interview. Unfortunately, due to scheduling and people just not being able to make it, we are going to hopefully get that done as soon as we're back from spring break. And so the academic best practice interview is the mock interview where students ask the different division chairs questions like, what do I do if I have an issue with the professor? What do I do if I want like alternative reading material, that kind of thing? So we're hoping to get that going as soon as possible. Next up, we have the hammock project. So another thing that was really big on the spring survey was outdoor seating. Students really want places to sit outside when the weather is as beautiful as it is this week. And so we've squared away some funding for that. So hopefully we'll get that going soon. Day of service, we're getting plenty of volunteer sites. And so again, day of service is something that we've done annually for quite a while now, where we have students come and volunteer some time at different organizations on and off campus. We also have a few of our senators working on marketing the resources here on campus. And so the idea beyond that is we're trying to pinpoint down everything that NIC has, you know, the food pantry, the free tuning with Math Education Center, like the Trio Club, all these wonderful resources. We just want to spread the word about it because I've been here for nearly two years and I'm still finding out more and more about the resources that we have. It's phenomenal. So we're trying to get through with marketing and that, creating flyers and spreading the awareness. One thing that we just finished up was the professor appreciation box. I had several students come up and like tell me like, hey, I have a professor who is holding up this entire major on her back and I really wish I could show support, but I feel pressured, don't want to create a conflict of interest. And so we built a professor appreciation box. People can leave a note for their professor anonymously and say, hey, you're doing a fantastic job and thank you for everything that you've done. So that wraps up what ASNC Student Government's been working on. I think the students are very optimistic, having Dr. Nick Swain back on campus, staff, students and faculty. I mean, this is the happiest I've seen people in quite a while. It's great to have them back. I guess the other concern is the votes of no confidence still haven't been addressed. I was wondering if there's plans to acknowledge those.
There there is, but to be honest, we not tonight, but I'm hoping next board meeting.
Okay, cool. Because the vote of no confidence from students had a couple of things in there, like speak in a way that doesn't obstruct your voice, reinstate Nick Swain. A couple of those have been addressed, but the vote of no confidence hasn't been addressed yet. Get that acknowledged, that'd be great. Other than that, yeah, it's great to have Nick Swain back. I mean, if there's anyone on this campus that's dedicated to making sure that we have all these wonderful resources in this community college, it's Nick Swain. We're very happy to see him back here.
If I could just respond, I do believe the board has heard you and at least acknowledged that we like, we've received your vote of no confidence and we're thinking about it. So if if that's not been said, then let let that at least be clear that everyone here has is doing that. So now how to properly best respond is something we've been, we're actually working together on. So
That's good to hear. Yeah, like that's that's a good first step is acknowledging that they were passed. So I look forward to hearing the response to those. Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
And trustees, any questions? I would just like to say it seems like you're making NIC better than when you first arrived here. And that's always that's always great. I mean, like hearing, doing really cool stuff that listen to students and saying, let's change that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I love North Idaho College. I think, I think all the students here know that we have something extremely special, I guess.
NIC is.
Yeah, right. I guess if I if I can speak about NIC, when I first started here, I'd spent four years between high school and college. I just bounced around the trades. I poured concrete, I laid brick, roofed houses. I did you know, black tar roofing. And so I got here, I was worried I was going to be the oldest person in my class and kind of like the the oddball out because I'd spent so much time away from school. And I can tell you, to this day, I've never been the youngest person in a classroom. So North Idaho College is for the community.
I thought I saw a sign on the entrance here about elections for ASNC.
Yeah.
Well, what's the, do you know the schedule for that? Sorry to put you on the spot or
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, I should know this off the top of my head.
If if I could just encourage you, I don't know, I think the whole ASNC or the student body gets emailed on that, just making sure as much awareness as possible for those elections.
Yeah, absolutely. Michael, do you know off the top of your head? This is Senator Michael Hoberman.
Thank you. Apply by March 31st. That gives you a lot of time to file the application over spring break to all the students. And then election should be held in the beginning of April. And then we swear in new officers on the next ASNC board meeting, like pretty much one month from now. So it's a really fun time. Highly recommend.
Spread, spread the word.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your your comments. I really do love this college and I do my best to support all the students. And I think Nick Swain also does a fantastic job in making sure that all student voices feel represented.
I think everyone at this table loves NIC, feels the same.
Thank you.
And Ben Ishida, welcome for the faculty assembly.
Chair McKenzie, members of the board. Faculty are engaging in great work across the campus. A couple of items I'm personally involved in right now. Faculty recently completed our survey for committee assignments going into next year. That is that those committee assignments will be something we'll vote on towards the end of this year. Our executive team will get those nominations put in and and we'll bring that before our body. I believe it's in our May meeting. And we'll also have elections on new officers going forward in that May meeting. We'll open that up for for folks to volunteer in our April meeting. Also, I was informed that funding for outdoor classroom spaces has been improved. As Damian mentioned, students are always happy to get outside. I personally had the opportunity to take to take one of my classes out last fall onto the beach. I had differential equations on the beach last fall. It was a great time. Math on the beach. People were stopping by saying, what are you doing? Math on the beach? I would even sign up for that. So I I'm excited to have those outdoor spaces available. I'm excited to bring my classes out there for a day or two each semester when the weather's nice. So I'm looking forward to that. On March 9th, the faculty did have our regularly scheduled assembly meeting. We had the opportunity to get Dr. Swain in. He was there to answer some questions, getting back into his role and get us on on the same page as far as what accreditation is going to look like and where we're headed in the near future. We also had a group of faculty get together and submit a proposal and call for a special meeting of the faculty assembly that happened yesterday. From that meeting, we did have a resolution we discussed. We made a few edits to it and we did pass that resolution with overwhelming support. And so I will now read that resolution. North Idaho College Faculty Assembly supports and is encouraged by the reinstatement of President Swain and implores the Board of Trustees to work with Dr. Swain to address all issues of concern raised by the NWCCU in the show cause sanction. Nice, short and sweet on that one. With that, I do want to mention just from my perspective, I'm looking forward for the board to continue to work together. I'm hopeful. I think members of the audience in their public comment had mentioned the the training that you all went through. Lot of eyes are watching. We're Lot of eyes are watching. We're looking for, for continued uh, results there. So uh, with that, um, I'll stand for any questions if you have them.
Any questions? No, um, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Uh, just to request if we could get a written copy of that resolution too. And then up next, staff uh, assembly. Uh. Gary, see my name?
Good job. All right. Thank you, Chair McKenzie, uh, board members Banducci, Corkiel, Wagner and Zimmerman and President Swain. And it does feel really good to say that. Staff Assembly met on March 9th. We celebrated Natalie Keim, our Student Success Navigator for the Career and Technical Education Trades and Industry Division as March's Sterling Silver winner. I presented some information regarding change and how to process change in our lives in a healthy manner. I thought it relevant information considering all the changes staff has been subjected to in the past few years. We received our Senate report. Uh, we did not have our PAC report at this time as our amazing Ken Thompson has moved on to another fantastic employment opportunity. We'll miss him and wish him well. His employer is lucky to have him. Sarah Martin filled in for him at this month's PAC meeting and we look forward to hearing from her at our next staff assembly meeting. President Swain did briefly join us to share with staff what he is currently working on and answered some pressing questions for us. We very much appreciated his openness and willingness to meet with us. We then reviewed upcoming information regarding executive staff assembly elections, staff excellence award nominations and our upcoming diversity council awards. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, trustees? Thank you for your staff assembly report. All right, Senate Neil Doyle, if you would please join us.
I would like to note he's wearing a kilt, which I think is just cool.
Thanks for that. Uh, thank you, Chair McKenzie, President Swain, Board of Trustees and guests. The NIC Senate last met on Thursday, September 16th, just last week. Um, we took advantage of the fact that we did not have any policy or procedure to review to go over the roles and responsibilities of the Senate. Um, sort of a re-education for uh, our members going into the next academic year. Uh, our Vice Chair Jason Drosh put together a really nice presentation. Uh, we talked about, uh, we also talked about our relationships with the uh, standing committees throughout the college. And I actually reached out to the advisors for those committees today, just looking for annual reports. Um, and then just the last thing to echo some of the comments made already, uh, committee, those committee elections are coming up soon. Um, so for staff, faculty and students, it's a phenomenal opportunity to get involved in the, the operations of NIC and just to learn more about the college. I wish I'd gotten involved in it a little, a little earlier in my time here. Um, and I'm looking forward to serving on some more of those committees going forward. Any questions?
Hearing no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, President's report, please.
Yeah. So I'm going to start by, um, a lot, a lot of folks kind of mentioned this, but I want to start by saying just how um, and you all may not see it yet, but the board is actually working very hard to um, to, to work together, to work with me, to work to support the, the students, faculty and staff. And so I, I would just um, welcome a, a round of applause for their work and their commitment to NIC. So um, thank you all for that. They, they have asked me to uh, work with them to address the votes of no confidence. So we'll be working on those issues. Uh, and again, we're working together on those issues. So we will be working on them. And I also say that they, they have committed and it's, they haven't made it public, but they've committed to working with uh, ACCT, American Community College Trustees. It's a big advisory board. And they're each individually working with those consultants twice a month. And then we will have periodic workshops where they, we get together and, and just practice working together. And so they're working with me as well. I'm, you know, trying, trying to figure out how to communicate better. I think that's with, with the board and make sure that we're all on the same page. And I think that's really important for the public to know that. Um, and it, it, it will, you know, there, there's been a lot of angst and animosity that's been out there on, on, on every angle. But, but we are working on resolving those issues and moving forward. So um, it'll, it'll take time to see that, but I think you're going to see that um, in the future. So um, I, I just want to start with that. Um, as all of you know, accreditation is top of mind. Um, and we'll address some of that later and there, there'll be more coming out. We are working diligently with um, with, with the NWCCU um, going back and forth. We get one chance on the March 31st letter. Um, one chance to get it right. So we've been going back and forth with them, trying to make sure that we're hitting the right topics, providing the right kind of communications, giving them the evidence that they are looking to see. We're going back and forth with them almost daily. So trying to get that nailed down is, is top of mind and, and we're working diligently to do that. Um, so we, we have restarted our strategic plan development. Um, focusing on enrollment, recruiting, retention. You've heard those a, along. I, I'm not one to sit on um, the the, the trend nationwide and say, well, if it's trending nationwide down, then it's okay here. Um, it's not. I think we have the, the capacity in our community to grow NIC. We just got to figure out what, how, how to do that. So we, we're working diligently on that. Um, that, that was my number one goal when I got here. Um, it's with accreditation changes that have taken place. It's now a tie, maybe number two. Um, but, but we are, we are working diligently on that. Um, we've also restarted our work on our facilities master plan with Architects West. Um, all this feeds into our formal strategic plan. Um, was, was supposed to start this spring. It'll probably start over the summer and the fall. Um, I, I met with the Corlaine Tribe, the, the tribal leaders, the first, the first week I was back. Um, they are very excited to reengage with NIC. Um, there are some, there are important academic and cultural partners. They, they are an important academic and cultural partner for NIC. Um, we're working to reengage on several points, starting with some additional programming. You'll hear more about this um, online. That uh, recognition of American Indian Heritage Week, starting on April 17th, we'll have a bunch of events that take place the following week. Um, and, and then, so look for those updates online. There, that we're really trying to improve the presence um, and the importance of the, our, our connection with the Corlaine Tribe and, and make that sort of a distinctive program that you can only get here at NIC. Um, and we look forward to a strong relationship with the, uh, Corlaine Tribe and making that happen. Um, I met with the leadership of the STEM Charter Academy to address their concerns and ensure that we have a, a strong working relationship moving forward. Um, I kind of look at them as, as one of the canaries in the coal mines, indications of our relationship with our K-12 partners. Um, so, so even though they're a smaller school, they remain an important partner in our dual credit program. I, I think that the, the numbers are 21 of their 24 graduating seniors are going to get their associate's degree from NIC before they graduate from high school. They love NIC. They want to continue that. They were concerned with the, with the shuffling around of, of leadership and other things. But I think we've, we, there, I think we're on the right track, um, getting back with them. Um, and so our, our, our students want to transfer, you know, they want to take classes, do CTE and then transfer those programs to other four-year institutions. So it's a great um, partnership that we have with them. And I think we're, we're back on track. Um, my, my first day back, I, I enjoyed a bo- boisterous uh, employee appreciation lunch uh, on March 6th. Um, it was well attended, probably more than 200 employees that um, attended that event. Uh, it was, it was great to see everyone's continued enthusiasm and to support the students and the college. And so uh, it was, it was great to be back on, just luck had it that, that was Employee Appreciation Day. Um, and I learned more and more facts about the college as, as I'm here. Um, I, something I learned at our adjunct faculty appreciation event that was last Thursday night. We have 132 full-time faculty. We have 166 adjuncts. And so together they are the heart and soul of this institution. And um, and they come from this community. They are part of this community and they come to this college to educate our students. So I, I'm, I'm, I, I'm in awe of the work that they do. Um, and so, so in, in recognition of them, we hosted a special adjunct faculty um, evening for them and they, they were very appreciative to be recognized. Uh, most of them only come on campus in the evenings. And then um, I, I want to say thanks to several board members for joining me at the first graduating class of our Basic Detention Officer Academy. We're the, we're the only one that has started this outside of Boise's uh, at Meridian. Um, it was a, it was a small class, but it was great. Uh, it was attended by Chair McKenzie and um, Terry Zimmerman. Um, and it, it means a lot to the graduates when the trustees are able to attend and recognize the hard work and dedication of our students during all graduation ceremonies. So I thank you both for, for making the time to attend. Um, and since, since this was our first class, it was really particularly important to have board members there recognizing the effort, not just of the graduating class, but of the folks in our um, Lieutenant Heil and others that really put a lot of effort into creating the program, getting it certified and then manning the program themselves. Really a lot of effort by um, NIC and uh, primarily, I guess, uh, Cootney County Sheriff's Department people. It was a great program and it's a great service to the community. Um, last Monday and Tuesday, I went to Boise. Um, there's, there was a, a $7 million allocation in the permanent building fund to enhance the, the training facility we have for our officers, uh, Police Officer Academy. Unfortunately, um, due to, I, I, I don't know what, but J-FAC had already taken out of the budget. So I was not able to convince them in the one, you know, in one day to put it back in. Uh, they voted the next day, took it out. However, I'll say that um, there, there's some real good news in our um, the, the deferred maintenance and uh, alterations and repairs. So up, upgrading and, and renovation of some of our facilities. Uh, we got 5.7 million in deferred maintenance that, from the state to, to keep our buildings up to date. And then a million and a half in other projects renovations to um, upgrade some of our facilities. So that, that's great. And, and uh, I think um, Sarah Garcia and her team, uh, Gary Stark, uh, for, for really getting that done um, on short notice. So um, we partnered with the four area chambers of commerce to host a large community forum on accreditation. Um, that was last Thursday. Uh, it started off as kind of an informal concept for a small focus group meeting. Um, I asked the, the chambers to help us bring some industry leaders together so that we could um, get their real questions from the, from the community leaders and industry leaders. Uh, so that we could then populate our frequently asked questions page. Um, and in about uh, 20 minutes after they made it public that we were doing it, they had more people sign up that they could fit in their conference room. And so we ended up hosting it in this room and there were about a hundred people that showed up. And um, and, and I'll, I'll say there are people on, on many, that, that represented many different facets of the community. And the, the, many people came up to me afterwards from both sides of the, of the um, argument. Uh, I, I, which really, they were round tables. So they weren't all one side, right? Um, but, but what was really important is they said, we have not had an opportunity to sit down as community members and have a, an open civil discussion across the table. And so they thanked me, they asked me if we could do it every two weeks. I'm not sure we can do that. Um, it takes a lot of work to do that, but what we saw was people that could share their differences, share their opinions um, and, and come together. And so it was really, uh, I think a very valuable project that we did wasn't set out to do that, but it worked out really well. Um, and we got a lot of information that we can populate our FAQ page on. And this was all about accreditation. What are your concerns about accreditation? What can we do? But it really grew into more than that. And so we will have more of those, um, but probably not every two weeks. So the, finally, I'm, I'm working on a, to develop a schedule of regular reports to keep the board and the public better informed. Um, and so you'll see, we're working again with these ACCT consultants and others to develop um, monthly recurring reports that keep the board informed so that they can do their job. Um, the public is informed. So monthly reports, quarterly reports and annual reports that help inform them so they can do their job and understand what's going on. The public can understand better about what we're doing. So um, it, it's going to take some time. It's been some, it's been some time since that we operated that way. And we want to get away from like, you know, snap decision, what goes on the agenda and really have some stuff planned out that matters about the business of the college. So we're working on that. It'll, it'll have a couple of drafts to get all that lined up and try to align what we're talking about with what's going on on campus. So we don't talk about the budget and developing the budget three months after the budget's done. So trying to get all that aligned. So everybody understands what's going on and we can keep the, the, everybody informed. Um, and then manage staff time accordingly. Cause it takes, when there are kind of last minute requests for information, takes a lot of staff time to pull that together. And, and we got, there's, there are just a lot of things happening. So that concludes my report. I, I stand for any questions.
Hearing no questions? I'll just say that I'm hearing things being done to continue to turn down the environment around here. So it's great to see people smiling, I'd say, in this board meeting. And I'm also pleased NIC is meeting the needs of the community. In this case, Cootney County Sheriff's with this graduation and the new program. And if you need certi- certified individuals, come talk to us. Here to meet you need. Moving on to the consent agenda. I'm pleased, personally pleased with everything on there except the March 6th uh, minutes. And as public comment indicated, uh, my recollection is a little different and I just hope to maybe approve that the next board meeting after I have time to just compare. I'm sure it's probably everything right. I would just like to watch it again. Then before the minutes are approved, I just would appreciate that. So I'm going to pull the March 6th minutes off and table it for the next board meeting without objection. And um, we're going to leave the rest of the items on the consent agenda and I'm going to consider them approved unless I hear without objection. They are approved. Okay. Moving to beyond the consent agenda and
Yes, we'll mark that as unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent for approving the modified consent agenda. So March 6th minute, Shannon, if you'd put them on the next board meeting, appreciate that. Unfinished business, there's none. So we're moving on to new business and uh, oops.
Beth Ann Fuller.
Beth Ann Fuller, thank you.
No, this one.
Yeah.
Chair McKenzie, trustees, Dr. Swain, thank you so much for including our Head Start business in the consent agenda tonight. And also for allowing us to put on our continuation grant application and our cost of living adjustment and our quality improvement funding application this evening for action. Um, these slides show that we are tab five and six. I apologize for how thick it is. Uh, North Idaho College Head Start is a school readiness program that provides education and support to young children and their families. We have over 299 children in all five northern counties that we serve. These are three and four-year-olds that are, are typically in poverty and/or have other stressors in their lives, which you just approved our selection criteria in your consent agenda. So next slide, do I need to? Okay. I don't know. Thank you, Sarah. So this is our grant application. So in this period of performance, it's from seven one of 2020 to six 30 of 2025. So the application before you is for the fourth year of our five-year grant cycle. We have had a grant with North Idaho College for multiple decades. This is just one of our five-year cycle grant um, opportunities. This continuation funding is for next year, which is the school year of 2023, 24. So our general program operations is called our PA 20, which is there. Our training and technical assistance is money set aside specifically for training of staff and volunteers and parents in our program. And then that total funding that we're being offered is $3,436,287. So other revenues that our program receive is TANA funding and that funding comes directly from the J-FAC Committee at the state legislature. So they look at our program and they honor that our program is a self-sufficiency program. We help families towards self-sufficiency. And so it meets the criteria for them to use some of their funding to allow us to serve more children in our Head Start program than we could if they weren't funding that for the last few decades. Our USDA funding, CA, it's called CACFP, Child and Adult Care Food Program. That, when you see our annual report and how many meals we serve to children, we serve many breakfasts, lunches and snacks to lots of hungry little ones. So we are So we are reimbursed for that to a certain extent. So that pays for some of the food and some of our staff time on that. Harding Center is our main administrative office and our, one of our largest Head Start centers here in Coeur d'Alene, 411 North 15th. It has some additional space that we do rent out to many community groups. So we do take in that revenue and then we're able to offset our, our operating costs with that. So total funding of $4,707,653. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you. I didn't, I should have learned how to do this before tonight. So our Head Start supplemental applications, so this is funding that's being offered if we meet the criteria. And it's being offered in permanency. So it's not just a one-year funding. And that is a COLA or a cost of living adjustment of $190,570. It is primarily to bump the wage scale. And of course, you may have seen in the, the news lately about the whole childcare industry and early childhood education in general is not a high paying area to, to go into unfortunately, but this addresses that. So we were able to take our wage scale and bump that up by 5.6. And then also take the rest of what was left over of that 190 and be able to use that for increased fringe and increased off, offsetting of increased operating costs. So our quality improvement funds, 50% of those were required to be allocated to, to both wages and, and incentives. So we look at using the majority of that to also look at very specific areas in our wage scale where we were still quite a bit below market for those comparables. And so we went ahead and used that 79,246 to also increase certain specific pay areas and then offset our higher insurance costs for this next year. And then these permanent increases are effective at the start of this next year, which starts July 1st, right along with the college's budgeting. And one more. Thank you so much. And then, so this shows you our program enrollment slots and where we have our children. And this is based on, on doing a very thorough community assessment of where we're needed, based on the needs of each of our communities. So in Cutney County, we serve 180 children. And so we're proposing to continue to do that at our Harding Center in Coeur d'Alene. Our Community Early Learning Center in Coeur d'Alene, which is the, inside the Community United Methodist Church across from Lake City High School. The N I C Children's Center, which we have a classroom in. And the Post Fall Center and our Lakeland Center in Rathdrom. So that makes up all of the slots that we have in Cutney County. Bonner County, we have a Sandpoint Head Start Center right across the street from the Outreach Center for the college. We actually use the Annex as where we go for an evacuation if we had a problem and needed to get all our little ones out. They go over and practice bothering everyone over at the Annex to, to know where they need to go in an emergency. So the Boundary County Julian Boucher Early Learning Center is in Bonners Ferry and we have a classroom there. In Benowah County, we have a classroom in, right in the town of St. Mary's. And then in Shoshogen County, we have a classroom in Kellogg. So altogether, we have 280 federally funded slots and 19 TANA slots that we happen to serve in Bonner County. So those are our total enrollment slots of 299. And then I just wanted to mention that in front of you, we did send an invitation out. So as part of being our, our shared governance of our Head Start program, the Policy Council and N I C Board of Trustees, whoever may be able to attend this next Friday, April 21st, which is our next Policy Council meeting. We are going to do a trainee, a joint training. It starts at 8:45. It'll end with lunch and then we would invite you as guests to also just watch a Policy Council meeting if you can possibly stay till 2:30. I want to thank Chair McKenzie has been to this training before, so he might be able to offer whether he felt it was, it was a good use of his time.
Absolutely. Good use of my time. It helped me build confidence in Head Start. I didn't know anything to start with. And yeah, I would definitely encourage any of us to be there.
That's great. Thank you. And then I would just be happy to answer any questions at this time.
In this era of troubled governance, I would say I saw excellent governance of what
Awesome. Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve and then approve the
What would be the continuation grant application, the COLA and quality improvement applications?
Tap five. May I have a motion to approve the grant applications and the COLA adjustments? And as she said.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you. Second. That was, that was a Corkle who made the motion and a Waggoner who made a second. And if there's any, trust Banducci on to discussion for you.
Well, just real quick, you said continuation grant, COLA, and quality improvement. So we're approving all three of those.
I think COLA and quality improvement are, two of them are combined.
The Head Start Continuation Grant.
You're, you're correct, trustee Banducci. The continuation grant application was a notice of award. And then the COLA and the quality improvement came together as an additional notice of award, but they are definitely three different
Lots of money.
Funding streams.
Do, do we need a separate motion for each of them is the question. I don't think, I don't think we do. So we're going to keep this motion on the table and is there any discussion? We're going to go for a vote for approve of your request tonight as you've played out for us. The approval of the continuation grant and the COLA and quality improvement is what we're voting on if there's any concern. Call for the vote. All those in favor of passing and supporting these requests, say aye.
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 That's four votes in the eye and you have unanimous approval. So excellent head start. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And legal litigation, we get to actually skip that agenda item, I'm pleased to say. And on to Dr. Nick Swain, if you would. The N I C's Athletic Conference.
So it's a, it's a very quick update. So shortly after I got back, I received a, an email from the, the president of the Athletic Council Presidents. But I'll, I'll start by saying, when I got that, I wanted to find out what was going on. So on January 19th, the former administration under interim President South asked the the, the J W A C to move, asked us to be able to enter into J W A C. So that was on the 19th of January. Then on the 8th of February, there was a proposal set forth again by interim President South that said, some of our sports, our winter sports would be in J W A C and others might stay in, in N W A C. Or sorry, SWAC and N W A C. So that's the Scenic West Athletic Conference, which is part of N J C double A. So the, both of those letters were proposals going forward. And then on the 14th of March, I received an email or a, a letter from Dean Fisher, who serves as the president of the Athletic Conference. And essentially what he said was, you gotta fix your accreditation first, fix your accreditation. And then if you want to reapply, do that for the 24-25 season. And so we could, we can figure out what that would be, but they asked for enough lead time. Usually they, and this was in the email, not in the letter, usually it takes them about eight, they're, they're planning events and planning their schedules about 18 months out. And so we, we have to kind of figure out what that timeline is. And then, and I don't remember when we had the meeting, but I, I was, I was asked to meet with Marco, where did Alex go? The, the executive director of N W A C called up and said, we're, we're like this close to throwing you out because nobody coordinated with them, at least to their liking. And so we were almost in this never, never land of not in N J C double A and also not in N W A C. And so we, we spent about 45 minutes on the phone with them and kind of talked them off the ledge. And they agreed to let us stay in N W A C. So, so that's where we are. And you know, we'll continue to work those issues. And, and some of the things that we'd like to do as part of our strategic plan is, is look for facilities. How do we increase, improve our facilities now to support the athletes that we have now? And so that we have adequate facilities going forward. So once we get through our accreditation issue, I think that's something that we should consider as part of our strategic plan, if you're open to that. And put that in. So we don't need to decide on that tonight, but that's just a quick update, I think, on where we are with
Thank you, sir. On to inform, without further, if there's nothing more, informational items, accreditation and show cause updates, Steve Kurtz and staff.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Swain. We've been busy with the writing of the report. When you said Steve Kurtz and staff, just wanted to acknowledge. I see Karen Hubbard out there, Sarah Garcia. I know Lloyd might be listening tonight, Lloyd Dooman. Sherek Simpkins is, is watching tonight. Amber has the data team. There's so many folks and faculty and staff who have been providing input into the, to the report. I've just been very busy. It's, it's very fluid. That's the best way to describe it. This is a very rare situation. It's one that we don't want to be in. It's something that N W C C U doesn't want us to be in. They're here to help us. And we're just so grateful to N W C C U as Dr. Swain mentioned in his report. Anytime we wanted a device or input, they had been there. The first part of it was just trying what to write about. They provided us excellent information about how to structure it. The tone of the letter and also the, what type of evidence. We, we spent lots of hours together, weekends, and provided them some input. They gave us some really good feedback and we spent most of the day working on the report. A lot of it has to do with finding the evidence and making sure that all of the eligibility requirements and standards are met.
Can I, can I just?
Oh, yes, sir, please.
So one of the things that we're, we're really working to do is, okay, we're, we're under show cause. But fundamentally, this is a wonderful institution. It is strong. It is financially sound. We have great faculty. And so we're, we're trying to balance the, the governance by saying, okay, yes, we acknowledge, but we are still fundamentally an excellent institution. So that's, that's some of the stuff he's talking about.
Absolutely. Also, in addition to the report, the teach-out plan is just as important that we've been requesting. And, and we're learning as we go. The, the circumstances are really dire. I have to be honest with you. They are. And we are taking this, writing to the worst case scenario with our response, just in case if we do have an adverse action. We, we've been asked by N W C C U to do that. After several meetings with N W C C U, it's, it's exactly, it's, it's hard to predict exactly what will happen to N I C in the event of an adverse action. But the teach-out plan right now only includes the list of currently enrolled students, their programs, along with the number of credit hours on the list of alternate institutions where similar programs are offered. So right now that's all they need, but yet we're interjecting information into the teach-out plan to help support a worst case scenario, which, yes, sir.
Yeah. So I want to point out as one of our, we have two big challenges with the teach-out plan. And that is our C T E programs and our medical programs. As, you know, many of you know, our nursing program was ranked number one in the state. There's a reason for that. We have a different curriculum, different, that, that we teach differently. They all end up learning the same stuff. Our students learned it in two years and the four-year institutions take them four years. Just think about that for a minute. And so all this stuff is compressed and the way that they, they lay this out, and this is true for nursing, it's true for Rad Tech, it's true for all of our medical programs. We do it differently and we get better results. So it's very difficult for our folks to turn those programs over to a four-year institution where like L C S C. L C S C is very, they're bend over backwards, but you, the curriculums don't align. And so it's really difficult for them to figure out, and this is all looking out for the students. How do we take the, the student experience that's set up for a two-year program and blend it into a four-year program? So early, you'll, you'll hear from Matt a little bit later, but they're, they're working really hard with the partners because we can't just depend on a plan that then gets implemented all of a sudden at some point. We really have to think these things through and make sure that everything is organized and articulated well in case we are asked to implement it at some point in the future.
Thank you, sir. Even though we're talking about the bad and, and we're not allowed to predict the future of, of, of a visit. But the best possible scenario for us, we're, we're thinking would be a lower level sanction such as warning and probation. This will pin them on, on the report, the, the visit and the commission hearing over the next few months. The team is also prepping for the visit that's occurring on April 26th to 27th, including the agenda, security and transportation logistics. Appreciate Shannon Goodrich for her work on that. We also understand that the visiting team has started meeting in preparation of the upcoming visit. We'll be hearing about what type of meetings they want to have, especially with the trustees, faculty, staff, students. And, and so we'll keep everybody posted. After N I C show causes reported submitted to N W C C U, we will most likely have advanced requests of documents from the members of the visiting team. So appreciate everybody's, that's a thank you in advance for faculty and the students and all those who are involved. And we'll start prepping the board, faculty, staff for the visit. And we, we predict that the amount of communication will pick up significantly over the next few weeks. Dr. Swain, is there anything else you want me to cover, sir?
I think that's enough for now. And if there are any questions by the board.
I don't think so. Appreciate your work.
I have the next one, I believe.
On to spring enrollment.
Thank you.
Would Steve Kurtz please come to the microphone? No, that was a joke.
Thank you. Technology challenged. All right. March 15th is Census Day. So back then, it's a very stressful time for our data team. It's, it's, we're required to capture or snap our census enrollment and we did that on the 16th. So it's an opportunity to showcase our, our enrollment. On March 15th, we're, we're reported to the state, a head count of 3959, which is a decrease of 4.6% from a year ago. And our F T E, which is based upon credit hours, is down 6.8% from a year ago. However, even though the numbers are really low, given the fact that we have a show cause order, just wanted to, to recognize the great work of everyone late last fall. I'll show you some data that, that highlights their efforts, especially with, one example is the community engagement group that was meeting every Monday, trying to make sure that N I C was out there. And anytime we went to the fair or if we went to a concert or we went to just anything that there was a lot of people. This group did a great job in looking in advance a month and making sure that folks were there. And a great, a lot of, a lot of N I C employees, students volunteered their time and that, that's highlighted here. New, it is slicing and dicing many ways. So new versus continuing students, you'll see that dual credit is up. That another positive, our dual credit advisors, our faculty that work with our, our partners, our K-12 partners in, in this region, looking at 8%. No, continuing dual credit went from 25.3%. Previously it was 24.3% of the total enrollment. So you see those numbers while our continuing students have decreased as a percentage of the total enrollment. The enrollment by student type, as you'll see, dual credit is up, the highlighted in the green. Thirteen nineteen versus twelve fifty-six from the year before. Academic programs dropped nine point nine percent, the enrollment in those classes. Non-degree students was up by six percent from a year ago. I remember earlier in the semester that those numbers are really lower than. It was a year ago, however, given the A B, am I saying that right? The second eight-week courses, the alternative scheduling that our faculty have come up is another reason why that those numbers could be up. Full-time versus part-time. When I first arrived at NIC, it was told many times, a lot, most of our students are part-time. And when looking into the future, strategy should be adopted to accommodate our part-time students. As you see, now that they represent sixty-five point one percent of our total enrollment. That's also an opportunity with capturing more full-time students down the road when we talk about strategic plan. Enrollment by age, here's another opportunity. We celebrate successes with students that are over forty. As you see, when you look at over forty, there's some progress there, some great, great results. Those students who are over sixty, fifteen percent from a year ago, but yet when you see in the red, especially when you get down to the lower ages, there's opportunity for improvement. But thirty to thirty-nine, twenty-five to twenty-nine, double-digit decreases. But yet, when you go down to under nineteen, minus one point seven percent, that obviously adds a tribute to dual credit. Our top ten high schools just shows a lot about getting out there and keeping those relationships, especially with what has given on the last few months. So, we thank our community partners there. My data team did want to say, we did not include the homeschoolers. If homeschoolers would be on there, they would be somewhere between eighth and ninth on that list. So, just keep that in mind. Something wanted the positive news, appreciate the faculty. Eighty-three percent of persistence rate went up from fall to right now. It improved by four percent. That's something that our data team wanted to let everybody know. Even though we may have fewer students coming in, more of those students are, they have confidence with NIC and are here now in the semester. And something, this is a big wow for me. I'm sure it is for everybody, especially in the cabinet level. The amount of applications has gone up. That, right now, we have thirty-six seventeen. And this time last year was thirty-five seventeen, thirty-five seventy-three. The number at the left is a result of a process improvement. Usually, when a new president comes in, usually those challenges that come up are, they usually rise to the top. And there was a process improvement that allowed students to register without a placement exam. Is that right? Am I saying that? Good, I got it. And as you see, there are significantly number more students ready to be registered. So, thank you to the student services for that continuous quality improvement.
That was a big team effort to figure out all of the places where there were roadblocks for registration and eliminate as many as they could so that students would move more quickly from applicant to, to, to ready-to, ready-to-be students status, which doesn't sound like a lot, but every time, every time a millennial, I don't know, we call millennials, whatever.
Not anymore.
The current Gen X, Gen Z, whatever, whatever we are now, the eighteen to the under twenty-one. When they, when they have a roadblock, they go away and they don't come back. And so, eliminating as many roadblocks so they can get through the whole process as quickly as possible is really critical to our enrollment numbers. And I think you've seen that play out now.
In conclusion, I'd like to thank the data team, the great data team, Chris, Lucy and Nishay for their time with this effort. That's all I have, sir. Thanks.
Questions of Steve.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Kurtz. And I think that, oh, one more. Matthew Nolan, if you'd please address the radiography technology accreditation site visit. Surprise, site visit.
Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, thank you for the opportunity to report our findings for the JRCR site visit. So, I put together a little presentation because programmatic accreditation is so unique as compared to institutional accreditation. I wanted to make sure that you understood who our accrediting body is, who awards them the authority to accredit us, and then what that process looks like in the report of findings that we received. The Joint Review Committee in Education Radiology Technology was founded in nineteen sixty-nine. They are the only organization recognized by the U.S. Department of Education and CHIA, the Council for Higher Education Accreditation. The Joint Review Committee Radiology Technology Accreditation is the gold standard for accreditation. And they accredit over seven hundred programs in the country. Why is programmatic accreditation important? Programmatic accreditation assures compliance with professional standards. It assures compliance with state and federal safety standards. It ensures that programs strive for improvement in assessing student learning. It ensures that graduates are eligible for employment like in the VA. Some employers require graduates to be accredited by a nationally accrediting agency, not just a regional accreditor. So, our graduates, if we were not accredited by the JRC, would not be able to be employed in any VA in this country. The mission for the Joint Review Committee in Radiology Technology is to promote excellence in education and elevate the quality of patient safety and patient care. This next slide for their scope, I just want to point to the bolded section here. Bolded, you can see that the JRCRT scope requires that the program be housed in an institutionally accredited college, university or medical center. That is recognized by the U.S. Department of Education. Without our institutional accreditation, our program cannot exist. So, what does programmatic accreditation entail? It's just as cumbersome and time-consuming as our NWCCU process, if not more. The program director is responsible for the entire process while ensuring the program is executed in a high quality. It is similar to NWCCU's process. NWCCU has two standards, twenty-two criterion or objectives. The JRC's accreditation process entails six standards and thirty-five objectives that must all be met. So, all these objectives must be met to ensure compliance and receive accreditation award. The program director writes a self-study addressing all the standards, manages the two-day site visit while teaching classes or having classes covered, receives a report of finding, responds to the report of finding and any follow-ups that are requested. The JRCRT board will make the final decision and award the accreditation. Annual reports are due every October for our program. An interim report is due at the midway cycle of the accreditation, whether it's a three-year, a four-year or the maximum eight-year. The program director executes ongoing program assessment and compliance with the JRCRT. This is a massive amount of work in a normal cycle for a program like mine. I am the program director and the accreditation liaison, all while teaching every course in the program and managing all of the clinical rotations.
So, Matt, before you go on, so Matt, you're the director. How many faculty do you have?
I have zero faculty. I have one adjunct that will help cover clinical one day a week.
Right. And so, who's helping you with all this?
We have a wonderful team in our division. Steve Kurtz is of assistance, but.
I just want to.
It's a lot of work.
When Matt, when Matt's talking about this, he's the guy. He's the guy. He's the, he's the department head. He's the instructor. He teaches all the classes. So, he's, he's talking about this in third person, but he's the dude. So, I think that's. There are no three people involved. It's him.
Let me ask a question. How many students do you guys serve?
Currently, we accept ten students every other year because it's, our accrediting body requires us to maintain a ten-to-one ratio. We have been approved for program expansion to accept a cohort every year. And that would require us to have another full-time person there. So, we would be putting out twenty students in that same two-year cycle.
That's what I was trying to understand is what the staffing was and was an issue of economics, was an issue of filling positions. Where, you know, in the labor market, we can't find a qualified person to come alongside you and teach. So, that's what I was trying to understand what the barriers are here. Why we're the size we are.
Yeah, if I may, when the program was originally awarded accreditation in two thousand and eight, this is actually my next slide here. It was a cohort that accepted more students, but they also had two full-time faculty members. And then, the program transitioned to the current model that I took over in two thousand and eighteen, whereas one program director responsible for everything. And obviously, I've been working to get us towards putting more graduates out because we need them drastically in the market. It is very difficult to find faculty because a clinical coordinator must have a minimum of a bachelor's degree for accreditation purposes. And finding radiographers who want to go on and teach, it's a unique field. Someone who's really driven for standard and impact. So, it's hard to find people to come in. It's going to be a difficult task.
Follow-on question, Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
You were talking about adding an additional cohort. What is the timing that you're looking at for that?
The additional cohort would start fall. So, we, I'm going to accept the cohort fall of this coming year. And we would take another cohort fall of twenty-four.
Now, are you advertising then for another person then at this time? Does, after discussing the challenges of trying to find somebody, have we started that process yet or? It's just out of curiosity. I mean, it's okay if we didn't. We just can't find anybody and we're continuing on or if we, I didn't know what the time.
Yeah, there have been discussions. It's going to be very difficult to get someone to move here. So, we do, it's a tiny community. We do know people with bachelor's degrees and culturing, you know, the right person to fit the model that we have here and who will subscribe to the quality of program that we want. So, there are discussions taking place.
Sounds like you're leveraging relationships that you have, trying to see if there's someone out there that might take a little different path to come join us.
Thank you.
Earlene.
Thank you.
Earlene has some. You stepped the mic probably so that people can hear you at home.
I'm sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions, but this is an important program and I know there's places we can.
State your name, please.
And I use the VA, so I want to make sure the VA staff.
My, my name's Earlene Pickett. I'm the Associate Dean of Health Professions and Nursing. And I have two comments that I want to make. First of all, when Matthew took over this program, we had had to place it on hiatus because it, it needed some work. It needed some definite work. We'd lost the instructor. And so, he took, what was it, a year?
Nine months.
Nine, nine months and rebuilt the program, met with the community, set it up to where it met what the community wanted. So, he did a lot of work to get it there. He is grooming somebody that we hope will move into that full-time position. So, we've had lots of discussion about it and hopefully we'll start to advertise. We have to hire by summer of twenty, by summer of twenty-four. So, I just can't, I can't say enough kudos about Matthew.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
So, we received our initial accreditation in two thousand and eight. Our most recent accreditation cycle was in, we were awarded a maximum eight-year accreditation in two thousand and twenty-one with the new curriculum and new program structure. We have a interim report that will be due in twenty-four of, next year. And then, I'm also, you know, every October doing annual reports. Onto the site visit. This was not a regular planned site visit and it resulted due to the NWCCU show cause sanction. The U.S. Department of Education was notified of the show, so show cause sanction. And they, in turn, notified all the programmatic creditors for our health professions and nursing program. The JRCERT home office sent two full-time staff to do the evaluation and not the typical peer evaluators that we would have received in a normal cycle. This was a unique site visit to go through. I, and say, I am a site visitor, also a peer evaluator for the JRCERT. And it was, it was an educating experience to be on this side of that unannounced site visit. Day one, obviously, day one started rather chaotic. I was in class administering an exam and all planned activities were interrupted. They showed up at the president's office, were directed towards our building. And I see them and they say, hey, I guess you heard, we're here. And I'm like, yep, you're here, let's go. All of the duties for the day shifted to managing the site visit and the team's request. My students did not get the regular exam review that would have taken place or would have been needed because I had no one to cover class and I needed to address the site visit.
Can I ask a question? What was the rationale for the visit? And if they're watching, maybe they'll get mad at this. Supposedly, we have some governance issues. Does everybody just assume suddenly we stopped teaching? I mean, what would make all these people suddenly need to show up and visit us? Like, all of a sudden, we're not doing our job and we're not educating and we're not teaching. None of this has ever been about the students or what's going on in the classroom.
Trusty banducci.
I mean, did they give you a reason why or just because they got told to show cause and here they are? Was there something that told them that something was amiss, remiss or amiss inside the teaching? Or something fell apart in the curriculum here or?
I believe it's, my understanding is that it's policy and procedure when a sanction of show cause is, you know, given that they are required to come to an unannounced site visit.
Thank you. Keep going.
Yeah. So, day one consisted of interviews with me, the associate dean. They met with our students for quite a while, asking them questions, asking about the environment, the scenarios, all these things. They met with our health professions advisor. We did a full programmatic review, just like it would have been a regular site visit in addition to addressing some of the other concerns that they were here for. They looked at our master plan of education, student files were reviewed. I mean, it was a full assessment and evaluation. They also reviewed the Board of Trustees meeting videos in the afternoons. So, they were doing their due diligence. Day two started off with me taking them to our community partners, medical center. We went to Kudney Health, went to Coy CDA, went to Northwest Specialty Hospital from around eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. The team interviewed department administrators, technologists, staff, students that were in the department and constituents available in the facility. They met, after that, they met with me, the program director, requested some clarification or clarifying documents. And then, I provided that. They worked on their report. We did what's called a pre-exit summation where they usually will meet with just a program director. But Earlene was there with me for that pre-exit summation. And then, we did the exit summation with the entire administration. Steve Kurtz was there, Sarah Garcia were there as well. So, just to kind of give some definitions here as we get into the report of findings. The JRCRT can find a program in non-compliance, they can find a program in compliance, and they also can find the program in a substantial compliance. They also can make recommendations. These recommendations are suggestions to make the program better. And they can do advisements and advisements are more of cautions that the program is close to a non-compliance and they urge you to make corrective action so you don't move that way. The finding of substantial compliance is the highest level of finding and it's reserved only for noting exceptional aspects of a program. Okay. So, I'm going to move on now to standard six. And just so you know, I decided to go through the. And just so you uh, know, I decided to go through the standards backwards because we have some really good things here six. And then as we get to standards two and one, we have a little more um, information. So standard six deals with programmatic effectiveness and assessment using data for sustained improvement. Our program was found uh, to appear in substantial compliance for all objectives in standard six. Clearly, clearly we have great outcomes, especially when you compare our program to the national averages. Uh, there were two recommendations and one advisement for this standard. Actions have already begun to address the recommendations and advisements um, that were within the report of findings. The next slide, uh, I want to take the opportunity just to provide you with some evidence of the quality of the program that we have here at North Idaho College. Um, I wanted to provide you a snapshot of the caliber of program we have here. Um, and what this accreditation situation could put at risk. Um, this is our National Board Exam Annual Comparison Report. You can see our last graduating class outscored the national average by eleven and a half percent and our and our program ranked in the ninety-ninth percentile in the country at a twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two test scores. To achieve this level of proficiency, it requires dedication and work independent of managing the accreditation process. Adding all the extra reporting and time required to address these extra accreditation issues puts our program at risk of not being able to maintain this quality of a program. Moving on to standard five, standard five deals with health and safety. Again, our program was found to be in substantial compliance of all objectives. Standard four deals with curriculum and academic practices. And again, our program was found to be in substantial compliance for all objectives. Standard three deals with faculty and staff. Um, and um, again, we were found to be in substantial compliance of all all objectives for this standard. So the site visit team did reference the NWCCU's uh, concerns in this standard. And then they reported that the program uh, is meeting as that program is meeting those standards. So as you read that, and it's in the report that was provided to you as well. Okay. The next two standards, both standards one and two resulted in findings. So I split these into two slides each documenting what we are doing well and then where we can improve. Standard two deals with institutional commitment and resources. We have the funds to operate our program at a high level. In fact, we just spent, uh, thanks to grant money, um, eighty thousand dollars to acquire equipment upgrades and also some new imaging phantoms that are going to help us uh, advance our critical thinking components of the program. The equipment and program resources that we have set our program apart from many in the country and are directly correlated to the positive outcomes that we've achieved. Second section here of uh, standard two. Uh, the program was found to be in substantial compliance with all objectives under standard two with the exception of of uh, objective two dot one, dealing with a sponsoring institution. The the show cause sanction and risk of losing the NWCCU accreditation is the issue here uh, because it's required for us to maintain that. So um, until that's rectified or we can address those things, we just it's going to be a process to work through. Okay. Standard one deals with accountability, fair practices, and public information. Um, the program was found to be in substantial compliance, again, for all objectives with the exception of one dot seven. Um, so here's the good things that were noted in the report. I'm going to go to the second slide here. Um, again, uh, so this standard and and these findings concerns the sponsoring institution and program comply with requirements to achieve and maintain JRC ERT accreditation. There are two main issues here noted above. They noted the NWCCU's determined, um, the sponsoring institution had lacked integrity. And and I'm not going to read everything there. The site the site visit team found that the institution does not appear to have a board of trustees that makes decisions reflective of educational needs of its constituents, which includes student, all students, staff, faculty, and the community. Um, in that constituents. And then they also noted that there were votes of no confidence that have not been formally addressed yet. So in in summary here, uh, the board decisions are negatively impacting the college's accreditation and as a result, are impacting the program's accreditation. The last little slide here, uh, I need to provide is this was the bill for the unannounced site visit. This this slide is documenting the extra unbudgeted cost associated with the unannounced site visit. We're required to write a response addressing these issues outlined in the report of finding and it's due to the JRC ERT home office, April twenty-fifth, um, so next month. And then with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions? I think it's getting close to the end of the night and appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, remarks for the good order. I don't think there's any and can this meeting is adjourned.